Good afternoon, everybody. We got, we're recording.
Okay.
Excellent. I'd like to call to order the Public Utilities Commission regular meeting for Thursday, May 8th, 2025. Time now is 3:30 PM. Kevin Biggins.
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The public input?
Yeah.
Okay, the correspondence?
Yeah.
Minutes, let's see, thank you guys for both here. Oh, it's not, we're gonna move that. So the, uh, the minutes from, uh, April 10th, we will table. The next one, sign officially table, just not gonna do it. And it looks like we're all here for the other one. I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the special meeting of May 1st, 2025. Have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? Saying none, try your minds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that carries an answer. And actual report. Do you have Brad with us, too?
I hear his voice, too. All right. Uh, we heard on the video, we didn't hear it at first.
He's down in the hallway, I, I'm assuming he knows he's supposed to be there. There he is. You need a minute, or you want us to jump right in? Yeah, we're there, but I can do the voices first if you prefer.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
So the front page still shows deficit, obviously, May is a billing month. The revenue versus expenses is based on billing, not on collection. Paula's still working through the sewer assessment billing, so that's even further down for the sewer assessment piece of it. So that's why they're both in the deficit. This time next month, they'll both be in surplus, because of this billing, and we'll see how they fall out. Uh, because that'll be the last billing, right? We'll talk more about that last billing when we get into talking about the 26 budget. But that's why we're in a deficit. The only accounts that I have any concerns about are the same accounts we talked about all year. We know utilities is a problem because of what electric did, and we know because of some of the breaks on the water, they're on the water side, right, Tom?
Yes.
Um, we spent a ton of money on, I think it's water main maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah, water main maintenance, the 5218. Uh, but we talked a lot about that. On the sewer side, we still don't have an actual bill from Danbury for last year, we only, we paid them at the end of last year, the estimated. Uh, they haven't trued it up, they haven't given us anything, even an estimated for this year. Tom and I were talking about it earlier today. Uh, obviously, we wanted that from them at some point. If they're not in a rush to get their money, we're not in a rush to get it. I kind of stance on it right now. If we don't have anything by June 30th, I'll book a million dollar IOU on the books and we'll see what it falls out. And we hope that the true up is better in a favor, but like, I also don't want them to rush it and do it wrong. So I know where we're at. I know I kind of flew through that. The, um, Water Department collection, when you look at the actual dollars, is up a little bit. We'll see how that falls out. Uh, obviously, the other thing we're struggling with, which we'll talk more at the budget time, is the issue with the MIUs and updating all those MIUs have kind of skewed our numbers for the last 12 to 18 months. Um, because there was credits and stuff in there. Um, because we were running on estimated. Um, so obviously, getting more and more of those off estimated, we're getting through numbers. So we will see how those fall out. Yeah, so that's kind of everything I have. Sorry, I was late and then ran through it quick.
Any, um, any questions, gentlemen? Okay. Moving along, invoices. I'll just make the motion and we'll discuss. I move that we accept the amount of 2,000, excuse me, 210,042.59 and approve the invoices. Do you have a second?
All right.
Okay, for discussion, um, these are called typical boards to roll, I'm missing it.
Kovacs, that's their monthly for the Grochrm. Uh, Weston Sampson, there's two there, that was for the, um, sanitary sewer evaluation survey for sub-area 13. There's two there because they gave me their last month one, too late for last month's meeting. So I just pushed it on to this month and, um, they were basically for finally, finalizing the report and getting the applications submitted to DEEP for our, uh, you know, for them to, uh, you know, review.
Right.
And then you had Melanie's two invoices.
Melanie's both sewer invoices, they say sewer out here, but are they supposed to be split?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I think it looks like it must be the stuff. It's split out. Yeah, she's got it on there. So let's split this out.
Yeah, it looks like two separate months.
Yeah, but some of it is water, some of it is sewer.
So I see here, um, on the back, for sub-area 13, there's a, a penciled in 2,000, uh, 231,000?
Oh, that, that might have been my, that might be something I scribbled in myself. No, I don't have it all.
Yes, yeah, it's on the back, so this is basically where we're keeping track of the money spent on the project at the
Correct.
To make sure that we've we pay the whole fee amount.
Yeah, that's, that keeps us up to date.
All right, so the penciled in, we don't
I don't even remember, I, I have to see it again.
Yeah, I'll just pass mine down, because I'll read it.
Okay.
How's that? It's on the back page. All the way around.
Yeah.
There you go, that's it. Okay, that works to me. Um, any other discussion on the invoices? Did you say we were gonna split the water and sewer?
Yeah, it'll be split.
Right. Any other people, gentlemen, thoughts? With that, we have motion on table, try your minds, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye. Reposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next up, um, trapped water sewer budgets.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, you know, put something together for this month, so we can at least present it initially. Um, I don't think it's gonna start to do any kind of voting on it at this point, but at least you'll have it now to kind of consider. Uh, and then we can make a motion on it, um, but we may have some tweaks to make still, uh, for next month. Brad, you want to start with?
Yeah. Um, so, page one of the Water Department, your finance, uh, collections, legal, IT, insurance, they're all either flat or at minimum increases based on salary increase. So the salary lines are based on the actuals, legal, we kept flat. IT is up based on what we've actually kind of been spending for it, I think that uh, 10% would be 2,300. So it's like 5%. Insurance was flat for workers' comp and lab. Boy benefits are relatively flat. Health insurance was up, actually, we're in the process of taking that number down a little bit. Tom, we should talk about that, we could probably update that number. And then utilities, the big change is electric. We might adjust this a little bit right now, but at the time that I built that piece out, like a month ago, electric rates were way up. It's not, well, there's two factors of it. There's the delivery piece was way up, that seems like it's come down based on what Kira did the other day, some of it was expiring. We haven't gotten the bill yet to see how that actually is. Um, and the supply rate, our current contract debt is separate 25. Um, so we're looking at signing a new agreement for electric supply, it's gonna be up because the town is locked in at 8. Uh, we're hoping they'll lock in under 10. Uh, which is 2 cents, which is 2 cents per kilowatt hour, which doesn't sound like a lot, but if each department probably does like a million kilowatts, it adds up. Um, so that's some of that increase, but that's why that's up so much. Um, the next draft may have that come down a little bit based on when we start getting the new electric bills.
The heating oil, I mean, it's nothing, but you still budget 20,000.
It says
Are we gonna be making the full tank eventually?
It's, it's, so the pump stations still use the heating oil, it's the only heating oil we use in town. I think some of them were charged in the prior year wrong. And that's the actual. Can't fix that at this point because that year's done. We do, they still heat Paul Street Pump Station and all the other pump stations.
Eureka.
Yeah.
And Chestnut as well.
Where have we been so far this year?
11,243. I don't know that we're gonna have another bill, I think Justin just called, I don't know if that bill came through.
Yeah. The hard part is it depends on how they don't use so much that it's like consistent until winter.
Yeah.
Rather not drop a number than come back to you and say, we spent 20 because it was a super cold winter. That number was based on what we used to spend. Water Department has a transfer out, which means more revenue is anticipated than expenses at this point. Um, obviously, it's not the final, this is first draft of it. See what that number looks like when we come back in June. I'm gonna skip the utility operations, have Tom talk about that piece. But I'll go through the rest of the things that I look at. Uh, debt service. Initially, we thought Bergstrom was gonna start, we were starting paying debt on it in August. We just extended it six months. Um, so now I know the math doesn't work out between six months and August and November, but now they anticipate that it comes in in November. So that has $315,000 of expense for next year to start paying for the version well. Appreciation's up a little bit. The big jump right now, which would be our biggest adjustment, is we have water use jumping greatly from the current year, 2.5 to 3.2. What they've filled out this point in the next 10 to 14 days, Paula's gonna do, or the Taxpayer Service Office is gonna do the next billing, or the last billing for the year, uh, which we're kind of waiting on to finalize that number. But they have done so right now, water use is at 2.3 million. The last quarterly billing was $700,000. I used the last one because the last one, which was February, shouldn't have any irrigation theory, right? So I don't want to pull like a summer one. Um, so if that comes in at 700,000 again, and when water rates are going up eight and a half percent, 3.2 is a good number. If the next billing is 400,000, we're not jumping to 3.2. So it's, we're just waiting for that one extra data point. And this is, I can't trust like the previous like, how, eight billings? Because the MIU replacements have made the water billings and sewer billings jump around. So that's why I'm waiting for that data point to file, to kind of finalize the anticipated number for 26. But based on what we've done so far this year, and what the last billing is, 25 should end at 3 million. So to jump to 3.2 is like that eight and a half percent on top of it. So in a month, I'll have a lot more information for you. The nice thing is, because we can simple budget in June, we can wait to get those data points, it's not like the general fund budget, which has to be locked April. Really March, by the time that we do all of our, so, um, at this point in time, I think the 3.2 is, I'm, I'm thinking the 3.2 is a good number, but uh, Tom, do you want to talk water operations?
Uh, sure, so it's on that second page, kind of the, um, on the far right-hand column, all the items that are listed in blue. I kept pretty much everything flat as to what it was last year except for three. Plant maintenance, I bumped far right-hand column, um, anyway, jump in right after, starting with chemical supplies.
Gotcha.
So it's maybe the fourth or fifth item down. So the middle column there is the current year budget, the right-hand column is what we're proposing for 26. I kept everything pretty flat, other than three particular accounts, plant maintenance. I bumped from 50 to 60. Our actual to date right now is at 57, so, um, you know, we're up a little bit from where I had budgeted 50. Wells no, let me see, oh, um, I'm sorry, plant maintenance. We are gonna be doing two tank inspections as well, so I basically bumped it 10,000 for those. Wells and reservoir maintenance, I bumped that five grand. Our chestnut reservoir, the gatehouse has a little access bridge to get to it, is deteriorated. I got a quote for just under five grand for that, so I bumped it from 40 to 45. Um, I'm still including a redevelopment of well, Maple Well 2A. Um, we did 1A last year, I'd be doing 3A this year or this coming year. And then the third item I bumped was water mains. We had budgeted 40, and just the cost of everything, anytime we have somebody out there doing anything, it seems like the asphalt costs, the labor costs have gone up. So I put it in at 45.
Isn't that what we blew?
That's the one we blew basically on one main break.
Okay, so what makes you think we're not gonna have another failure and drive that number up again?
Don't know. We can put a big number in there if we want, but then we're in the, in the red.
Sorry, she spent, the prior year actually was 21.
Most years it's down, we had a big main break on Greenwood one year under the railroad tracks, we had this main break this year, so most years it's, it's not doing what it did this current year.
There are two items I'm curious about, so one, if we end up doing a, if the town does an animal shelter, they're going to do it where that old well was. Is it the PUC's responsibility not to get rid of the well? Or is it the town's responsibility to do that part of the construction?
My opinion is PUC doesn't really have to do anything with it, so we could just let it sit. If it's part of a project that has to have it come out, I would think it's part of the project. But that would be my opinion.
What do you think, Brad? Is that steely eyed?
It's hard, because Tomer's one side of the hat.
True.
I understand that argument, I think it would depend on if PUC is eventually gonna do it, maybe there's a split. But if PUC was never gonna touch it, it probably should just be part of the project.
Well, just, it just sits there empty on town land. It's the same thing with like Paul Street, the, uh, the property behind Paul Street, it's just, it needs to be torn down so people can use it. But PUC's not using, it's town property. But T, we don't know, we no longer have our own sewage treatment plant. And all that by right should be removed at some point. Who's, is it the town's responsibility, is it PUC, is it, it's just something about it going forward, because that's you know, right now, it's like almost abandoned.
Yeah, it probably went as mothball. It should have been, PUC should have taken care of it, returning it back to its
Right.
original state.
Right.
So you can make that, like wearing my general fund hat, I'd go if they were leasing that land from us, the leaseholder would make you return it to its original state.
Right.
Um, but
Well, then the last question, again, for thought. We haven't included the budget, but what would it, what will it take to, uh, retire the Chestnut Ridge? Well. All right, not, no, well, uh,
The treatment plan?
Well.
I don't know exactly, we'd have to have a conversation with the health department.
Right.
We would need to have Grochrm up and running.
Yep.
I would want to see it running for X amount of time to know that you know, you don't need those backup supplies. Not that that's given us much of a backup.
No, that would, that would stop. Eureka, I, I would
Correct.
Understand.
Correct, so I think you get a decommission or whatever the right word is. You know, you, you get a decommission by the health department. Then you've got that building there, now
Right.
Again, it would be similar, what are you doing with it? Do you want to demo it in all in one shot, take it down to the ground, or just kind of mothball it and?
Yeah. Seems to be able to be a little bit of a liability left there in its current condition.
Probably. Could be a big number if I demo that building.
Right.
So
Some of us just start thinking about it at some point.
But it probably not gonna
Facing it.
If, even if it's a big number to demo it, the number's probably not gonna shrink if we don't do it in five years.
No, it probably will.
Right, yeah, it'd be worse, probably.
If we really are done with it and it has no useful life left, it probably would make sense just to bite the bullet and do it. It's probably not a 26 issue, it's probably more of a 27, 28 issue, but
Yeah. Uh, just kind of got to put on the radar now, just.
But maybe as a philosophy of stop kicking the can down the road on things that we know probably gonna be a later pause.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of those where, you know, bad news just keep that over time, it just grows.
Yeah. So
Certain things you're gonna want to do right away just to protect it, right? Make sure tanks are emptied and cleaned, you want to make sure piping is drained.
Yeah.
You, you see, you got an estimate on the whole thing and then you figure out when you're gonna, you know, budget for it.
We ran into this with, um, when we switched all the town buildings to natural gas. We didn't do anything with the oil on the ground, we didn't do anything with the tanks, and then later on, you have to go back and pay for it later on. Whereas it probably should have just been part of the project to initially do it and do it right the first time.
Yeah. Can we, yeah, I mean, I know you're busy, but in your spare time, can you just give Department Health a call and ask? What, what is the process?
Theoretically.
Yeah, what is the process, how many years, like, like, is it is it a long thing, is it easy, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hear you. Um, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Going, going back to the, um, from what I remembered, I had S B Church go out there and look at the well. And I don't think they could fully abandon it until the building's actually demoed, so you know, it's
That's the, that's the well out there by the
The brick building on Grassy Plain, yeah, yeah. So it's just not a matter of, hey, go do the well, it's, the building's gotta get torn down at the same time, which is kind of part of the project.
Yeah. So it, the problem may solve itself. That if you're gonna decommission it, to decommission it, you might have to take the building down anyway. Right?
Yeah, but like I said, I don't think there's any pressure or any
Yeah.
Well, we are looking, we are looking to, to use that, and we'll have to include it in whatever we're doing for the animal shelter. And we, we just gave that to the public site, the league commission, because it does need, what we have there has to be torn down.
Yeah.
Somebody has to rebuild, then the other torn down. Figure it out.
What, what would, if, if you took that building down, what would that property be used for?
The, uh, are we talking about the
Chestnut?
Chestnut?
No.
Or the
Brick one.
Yeah, so the building would be removed and the current idea is that the animal shelter would be built where that well is. So instead of the animal shelter back facing the swamp, it would be sideways, more on dry ground, and that's where
So you keep the old one in service, build a new one, and then you can transfer everything into the new one and demo it, and then demo the old.
Yeah, the current, the current plan, if that stands, that would be where the, there'd be an, that building would be gone, the old one, and that would be an area for dogs or whatever. So, but just looking ahead, I want to make sure I'm kind of thinking about it. And the, and the plan for Chestnut Ridge, honestly, I mean, we really haven't talked about it exactly, but there's an opportunity to really make a Chestnut Ridge Reserve. Because beyond all that land out there, we have to do something with the state.
One, one thing, once it's decommissioned, and I don't know, ongoing, the dam would still have to be inspected on, on a two-year cycle.
Yes, it would.
So the dam owner is still gonna be responsible for that.
Damn.
But if you don't use that, that starts, vegetation starts building up, it comes back to natural. And will happen in two years or four years or five years.
Yeah.
But the growth will come over, overtake that whole one.
Well, it may be something that you still want to maintain.
We probably would maintain.
Yeah.
That would be the goal. Maintain it as it is, you know. And again, to keep it a, kind of a pristine open space place, but also, you know, have more people connected with, like, uh, the, what is it, the Turkey? Say Turkey Plain Park, like, all that, all that land down there is all ours, past Bald Rock and everything. So we could do something like with the state trail system or whatever.
Passive recreation.
Passive recreation, yeah, that'd be a long-term goal.
No, right, it'd be a good asset for the town, for sure.
And you know, the Bethel fishing game, that'd be good stewards of helping that property for years, so. And technically, they still have a lease on it. They still have an active lease on that property to help us, which needs to be updated.
Well, actually, that water, where it was good, was better than your creek.
It was, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Think about it. Well, yeah. Anyway, just want to bring that up, thank you.
Sure. So the, the other big item on that is, uh, under capital projects.
Yes.
So if you go to page three, what I threw in there for capital projects is really, is really lean. The first four items are basically the construction, finishing up the construction of Bergstrom, finishing up the construction admin with Bergstrom. I'm taking a guess at what we might start construction-wise for SCADA, and then a guess at what the construction admin would be for SCADA. And then on the anticipated loans and grants, those four items would basically be recouped back. So that's kind of a break even. So really, what I'm proposing in, in, in new money to spend would be the vehicle replacement that we've had on there now for a couple of years. Uh, Midway Drive, trying to get that replaced, at least the first portion of it, from Milwaukee, hopefully to Short. Um, until we start getting some prices back from contractors, I don't know how much 250 is gonna get us.
What medical replacement?
The, uh, uh, the 94 Chevy.
25,000 is not
It's split between the two departments.
Oh, okay, even 50s.
It's probably up maybe another, probably another five on each side. But it's just gonna be a standard after on pickup. We need it some little heavier to deliver these
Right. Okay.
Tom, you should make note that it still says 25 on it.
Yeah.
Physical year.
Oh, up at the top, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, capital projects is just your 25.
Oh, thank you. So, so the other question, we, we just voted to do the water main replacement of Midway. Were we doing that out of this year's dollars?
I, I don't know that we have enough dollars for this year, to be quite honest with you.
Okay.
I thought I had, since we did, I budgeted for SCADA and didn't spend anything on SCADA. But I also had budgeted revenue coming back from the state, so really that was a wash.
So he, here's kind of my other question then, which was placed at Bergstrom, and we, we keep talking about we're going to get reimbursed. We're getting reimbursed from the loan, right? And then we still have, we'll have to put that in debt service.
So it's in the debt service number.
Okay.
So it's kind of goofy the way the water and sewer department, well, really water right now, where we budget capital projects, it almost should be completely separate from the budget. And at some point, when we get done with Bergstrom, I think in future budgets, I'm gonna pull it out, but because Bergstrom's been over multiple years, I kind of left it alone. We shouldn't really show the loan reimbursement and the capital project as part of our budget. We've done it, let's get past Bergstrom because it's such a big project, and I think in future years, we're gonna just break it out. Have the board go on a capital plan, and if it's on water loans, have that be completely separate. Because it really isn't part of the budget though.
Right, it's not, that's
It's an in and out. But that said, we've done the rest of Bergstrom this way, and
Sure.
Let's finish up the day one, and then let's make changes later.
Now, 250, yeah, Midway, what does that cover?
I, I'm taking a guess at, based on other current per foot cost, it should get us from Milwaukee up to where we just had, we replaced 100 feet on either side of Short, I'd like to get us up and tie it back into that ductal iron. So we would be ductal iron all the way from Milwaukee, all the way up, a little bit past Short, and a little bit down into Short.
Too bad.
Now, I don't, I don't know if their unit prices are gonna be
I know what I'm saying, I do, maybe we don't have enough to go up to the next group. No, because that's where the loop is.
Yeah. Understood.
If you could go up to there, then it'd be eight years later on to come back around and tie it in.
Once I get a contractor price per foot, then we'll know how far we can go. Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree.
Makes more sense.
If it's only gonna cost us 200 to get to where I'm saying, then I'll spend the 50 and, and continue on.
Just right here, you're outside, if you have to go around, you can look there like that.
Yep, yep, I think the break history, though, has been below Short.
Yeah, I don't know, there hasn't been any main break above Short. It's all been below Short. And the only issue we have up there is, I've said since I've been here, was something with loose current or, or stray current, because all the services that are going under the gas are rocking away from the outside.
Yeah, you've got a couple of services, probably, up there.
Quite a few.
Yeah.
But if you drive up through there, you look every patch, basically a service issue.
So we may end up doing finally all of Midway and just do it in pieces.
Yeah. Or right now, the, we're still, the priority is short.
Up to short.
Up to short for now, because that's, that's, I think. Okay. So we don't have two fifty, is what we're saying.
Correct, from what I, from what I.
It just, right now, it's a year, but a month from now.
And, and it's mid-May at this point. So I think we're gonna get prices from the contractor. Not that they're gonna be mobilized or ready to mobilize a, a week or two later. We're probably, he's probably not ready to start until. You know, July one or maybe at his best, June twentieth. So either which way, you're probably looking at next year's budget.
So basically, when I, when I look at the budget for water, under the capital construction, that's all Bergstrom buried in that, right?
Yeah, a lot, yeah.
Yeah, there, there might have been something else that happened this year.
We got two million left in that budget, or sixty-three percent.
But it's, yeah, because Bergstrom was supposed to be done. There really wasn't supposed to be anything in Bergstrom in twenty-six for the most part, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I mean, the retainage, there might have been a little bit still that would have carried.
Um, anything else on water or you want me to start on sewer? Um, the headline on sewer, if you look three fourths way down page one, transfer out instead of a transfer in of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Which means that we anticipate a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars less in revenue than expenses. Sewer department is sitting on over nine million dollars. It might be over ten now. So sewer department has run at a profit because we know. We've been holding on to that because at some point Danbury's gonna look for the treatment plans, so that's like fourteen million. And at some point, we're gonna get built. Again, I'm not in a rush to give them money. They're not looking for it. So I, I talked to Tom earlier today, two and a half years ago, I talked to the now finance director at Danbury, but hey, when you guys can bill us for that? Because, yeah, we gotta figure it out. And they've been a mess with their finances, so we've been kind of leaving them alone. Um, I'm not gonna push them. Right now, we're gonna just keep running as we're running. Um, and we'll figure it out. Obviously, if the commission doesn't want to, in essence, run a negative year, use our reserves of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. We'll have to make adjustments, but this is the first draft. The biggest thing driving that increase is capital projects are going from three thirty to five fifteen. So when Tom talks about the capital project, that's, that's kind of the thing that would have to be adjusted.
But what's scary is, you know, nobody knows, but they're hurting financially. They're gonna start looking for some money.
Well, but they're.
They are.
When they finished their twenty-three audit, which they just finished a couple of months ago, their Florida bed underspent the budget by nine million dollars.
Yeah.
So maybe they're not hurting for as much money as they thought they were, you know?
I know, but.
But they have their own mess to figure out, and I'm not necessarily in a rush to jump into their mess.
Yeah.
It's kind of where I'm at right now. Um, we were kind of pushing because we wanted to know, because at some point. We might have to do a rate increase for sewer, which we. But we may not.
But.
We'll get there when we get.
Right?
So most of the rest of the first page of sewer is the same story. Electricity is up. Hospitalization, hospitalization is up, but we should look at that because the town's trying to negotiate lower rates for health insurance. We can take it down, so. Most of the other stuff is salaries. Jumping into debt service, debt service is down fifteen, sixty-eight thousand dollars because we did a refinance. Um, you also see, if you look at the debt service, instead of being four lines, it's down to two, because those two old bonds were, were older than the one when we refinanced. And the piece, depreciation's up a little bit, and the revenue numbers are all exactly the same. Um, we'll see what they look like when we get that last bill. It's the same story, but because we didn't increase the sewer rates. Sewer really shouldn't, sewer use shouldn't be climbing. The only climb on it would be if there's more use or less use. So sewer should be relatively flat. And now Tom, the one fifty-seven number, is that still different? Yes, alright.
Yeah, because the, the state has to get the report basically accepted all, and then we can basically put in for the, uh, for the grant.
Um, so again, I went through that quick, but it's mostly the same story as the water, other than transfer out. So unless anybody questions, we're just gonna turn it over to Tom for the operations.
Uh, one question, operator salary, second page, it's flat.
So the, they have some hires.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So the new hires are on steps and.
Easy enough.
Yeah.
Great.
Uh, for sewer operations, really, I, I, I lowered one account, sewer line maintenance, uh, from forty to thirty. Actual spent, I think, was fourteen to date. So I could leave it at forty or, but since we were kind of in the red anyway, I lowered that one account because that was, that was, you know. Jumped out. Of course, saying that, expenses are gonna go up next year, right?
How are we at the pump station and what wells? We're all set with pump, pumps and motors and stuff.
Third one to be done, but we only did the second one this year, so I would, I would bump that another.
Are you looking in the future to do something there?
The third pump, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be.
Yeah, until you guys start saying, hey, we're having issues with that.
I, I, we got two, one brand new one and one is probably two years old.
And, and the one we haven't done yet was probably the newest of, were they all originals or were they replaced over time?
They've been done.
Right, so that was probably the newest and the best of the three originals.
And we wrote them, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah. They're on lead for a week and then, and lag and then, and then off. And then we just stay.
Yeah.
The guys keep up with that every, every week.
And sewer line maintenance, forgot right now, ten months out of the year is at fourteen-five of the.
But then the, the biggest thing here was just capital projects, and which, which, you know, if we don't want to, if, if we don't want to have a transfer in of that hundred and fifty-five. Then I've got to just take something out. At this point, I, I took a, a, an assumption of, um. Uh, lining pipe for three hundred thousand. That's kind of then been the ballpark of what we've done on some others. If you notice, um, I have the design engineering for that of fifty. I did speak with, um, consulting engineer about a sewer capacity study. So he had given me a ballpark estimate of forty to fifty a couple of months ago. So I put it in at fifty. Um, I think that is something we want to, you know, go after at this point. We have an issue with the generator at Clark Park one. Was it the transfer switch or was the actual generator?
It's actually the actual generator.
Alright, it's like, is that a nineteen seventy-four, I think, or?
Yeah, there.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is. It's, it's in the late seventies, early eighties.
Yeah, we talked about that when we were doing the other.
Yes.
To do a survey.
So the, the electrical, the pump controls and the pumps were done somewhat recently.
Yeah, within five years.
So we weren't looking at replacing those. So for this, we're looking at demoing that wooden shack that's sitting over everything. Like we did at Clark two.
Right.
Uh, demoing out the generator, new generator installed. And having the electrician modify the electrical service with a, with a new transfer switch and disconnect switch. And utilizing the existing electrical panel. So it'll look, it'll look like what we have at the other place. The good thing is we don't have to replace the pumps and the, uh, and, and the controls.
I assume that's a diesel generator, right?
Uh, no, it's gas. And then I put something in for Paul Street Controls to have, uh. I, I don't, I don't have their quote, so I put that in as a placeholder. Um, put backup floats in. I think we have the backup floats at Paul Street all these years, just give us an alarm. But they don't take control.
Right.
So if you lose your transducer, is that where we're, you know, the, the backup floats then would be able to get pumps on and off. So we'd like to get, go ahead and get that looked at. So really, the big decision for next time is, do we want to do the transfer in? Brad says we do have money in backup that we could basically transfer in.
Unless we fix the, the main on short.
This is sewer now.
Yeah, oh, that's right. I'm like, we got more money on that. Oh, yeah, good, it's sewer, sorry.
Yeah, sewer has plenty of assets, it's just, we don't miss, it'd be pretty much dipping into the bank account. Do more capital projects, which is kind of what it should be there for.
And we may want to start to consider like a, 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 a rate increase in sewer, just to get ourselves ready. The, the one thing I've noticed is that we still have the, um, I, I guess it's a decreasing block. Where when you use more sewer over sixty thousand gallons, the actual rate is less.
Yeah.
Remember, we phased that out in water. That may be the first step to doing something. And it kind of would, i- i- it kind of goes along with conservation too. So if you know you're paying, if you know you're paying less when you're using more, where's the incentive? Now, on the water side, we already have it built in. So that might be something to consider going forward.
Yeah, and because we did it, sorry, because you did a three-year agreement on the water or a rate increase on the water. You might be able to wait until you're gonna do the fours and fifties on water to do something on sewer, do it opposite time. Or you do it, maybe do it separate and just treat them as separate entities, which has its own. You just have to do four public hearings and stuff to do them separate.
Yeah, I mean, again, the, the, the angle might be just for conservation purposes and encourage conservation.
Yeah.
You phase that out over what we did in water, I think, is over a five-year period.
Right.
So you're really not adding on to the base rates or anything. You're just kind of phasing out that decreasing block. But anyway, that's.
At least you gotta look at both sides. But we need separate budgets.
Yeah, the other piece on water, I talked a little bit about the revenue. The sewer assessment only gets billed out to the tune of like four hundred thousand a year, um, but we spelled this eight fifty. Because sewer assessment still collects like over a million bucks.
Yeah.
But we hadn't phasing that number down because it's based on the billing. Because we are using some to transfer, we kind of held it this year. Uh, but we've been, I've been pretty aggressive. I think when I took over the sewer assessment line, it was like one point five million. So we've been kind of aggressive the last two years, so we're kind of pausing that a year, and then probably next year I'll be lucky to reduce it again. But, you know, fast, fast, slow a little bit with it, but it's kind of bounds out where we had room to do it.
The, the one other project that I needed to mention, we, we just found out basically, this week, I guess, Kelly indicated that, uh. The roof at, uh, Paul Street had a pretty good leak on it, uh, based on all the rain we got. Looking backwards, uh, I think offshore, you know the name of that company, offshore construction? They, they gave an estimate on replacing that roof, roof back in twenty fifteen. Nothing was ever done. I looked at getting a quote on it again two years ago, and the quote was about a hundred thousand. I think that's something we really can't push off any longer. So when I put this, this budget together, I didn't have that at my. I, I was unaware of that number at that point. Um, so if his number from two years ago was a hundred. One, one twenty-five?
Even more.
Maybe more. So in considering that transfer in, the one thing. If, if we want to add on the extra roof money on top of the one fifty-five.
Right.
You may be looking at a transfer in of three hundred to line some pipe and also do the roof. If you don't want to transfer in so much, maybe you're pushing off lining the pipe for a year and you take it out of the budget. So I think that's gonna be the consideration for you.
Can be maintained.
Yeah, I think the roof, in, in other words, you do both, you line pipe and you do the roof, and you're, you're doing a bigger transfer in. Or you say, alright, hey, you know what, we'll, we'll. Not take the hit on the lining of the pipe, push that off to next year. I mean, those would be the things to consider.
Um, stepping back to water, MIU management, we're good, enough money, everything's fine.
Uh, for budget-wise, I, I think we were leaving the forty thousand in there. Um, we, this year, we managed it, so hopefully they're getting less and we'll be on the plus side next year. So we, we weren't inclined to lower the forty. If we get lucky and, you know, that number coming down.
Yeah, I wasn't inclined to lower it. I just wanted to make sure that it was considered.
Yeah, no, as far as what we spent this year, we, we met it, so I think we're okay.
Well, and I mean, I'm looking at these, we're only, we're forty-two percent spent. We've only spent twenty-two thousand on the water side.
Okay, I, I don't know if we still need to buy some before the end of the year, so.
Okay. Yeah, because we're, we're halfway on both accounts. We should probably get forty thousand dollars still that.
Well, that account covers MIUs and whatever meters Kelly has to replace. So, yeah, so he is gonna spend some before the end of the year.
He might have ordered some and not got built yet.
Yeah, just, I'm gonna just check for those, because I mean, forty, there's a couple of accounts, forty thousand will spat, like it looks big.
We, we can look at that again in a month and decide, you know, maybe we come in with a little bit less.
Yeah, fair enough.
And these, these big teams, who are, they're almost at the top of the piece.
Yeah.
I try to keep a couple of those on the stock.
Yeah, we got a couple of spots where it seems to have some money left. We didn't do anything with litigation, but we keep that in there anyway, litigation money.
Yeah, but some of like the bills that we got today are from November to December.
Gotcha.
So even though we're in May.
Litigation is still moving.
Litigation is still moving.
And then contracted services, it seems like we had a lot left from one of the two accounts.
In sewer.
Sewer.
We haven't got built from Danbury.
Gotcha. Well, that's where that, that gets put in.
Yeah.
Beautiful thing. That's all we put aside every year is.
It's a million bucks.
Wait, no, I was hoping.
You're looking at something else now.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Because it's a million.
Yeah, well, a million, I, I, yeah, I know about that, but.
It's the same account number we just, um.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, no, we changed the number.
Yeah, so contracted services, we had fifty-five thousand. That's for like probably maintenance contract, kind of stuff. That's, that's water. And on the sewer. Forgot we got number one, so I saw. Uh, country services, it was, oh, that's the million, okay.
Well, and underneath it is, so contracted services is really three lines. On the one side, we spent twenty-three of thirty, zero of a million, and two ninety-two of three thirty.
So we're talking on the sewer use or the water side?
Sewer.
Okay, yeah, three thirty, and we spent thirty-seven, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, three hundred and thirty was the revised budget. We spent, uh.
Two ninety-two.
Two ninety-two, okay.
Which is right where we should.
Yeah, that's right where we should be. There's another one that, uh, where's the third one then?
It, it, one's the city of Danbury. So there's.
That's a million.
Yeah, there's one above the city of Danbury, and one below it.
So there's two lines.
Well, it, they have different, they all say contracted services, one says capital. The three thirty says capital, two ninety-two of three thirty. Contracted is twenty-three out of thirty thousand.
Got it, yeah, just we have the two lines, not three.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I don't know the other.
One shouldn't say really contracted, but that's.
Yeah, but it's a different account number anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm, I was just kind of looking at the contracted services, moving the sewer side, that, alright, we're good. We have room for meters. Five meters, six meters. Oh, speaking meters. Are we done with your?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if there's any other questions on the budget. Obviously, we'll have updates a month from now with what we're having.
Kind of guy related, kind of note, um. Spare parts inventory. We have a list of what we have.
I don't know that you have a list.
In, in what?
Spare parts and inventory?
Any spare parts? Don't you need to have an inventory list?
We have a big inventory list for the Bergstrom. I mean, there, there's quite a, a few parts. And I just like with meters and stuff like that, when I get low, I start buying. You know, other than that, there's really. What would I say? I'd say your, your, um. Your meters, your horns, all that, it just, when we get low, we start buying. It should, that would probably be the only thing that ever inventory and, uh. We just keep them, hold it, keep floating.
When we have a water main project, you then get copper, you get corporations, you get.
We build kits for hydrants, hydrants, uh, different fittings. Sometimes I can offset with whatever the contractor's doing by supplying the fittings or so they don't have to run out and get them.
Well, that's all fine and good, but shouldn't there be a list?
For what reason? I don't.
So that we know what we have.
I know what I have.
No, you don't.
Yeah, I do.
And write it down. Kelly, I want a list. Kelly, I want a list. I want a list of what we have in inventory. I want a list of how many we buy. You have to manage the inventory. You have to manage the inventory. How many dollars are tied up in inventory?
I'm sorry?
How many dollars are tied up in inventory right now? Can't tell, couldn't tell.
I get inventory from nineteen to seventeen.
You gotta know what your inventory is. Come on. It's two thousand and twenty-five.
Hey, any other uh items regarding the budget? Well, and we'll talk about inventory and we'll do that along.
Okay.
Um, director's report?
Uh. Okay. Midway Water Main, we talked about uh Clark Park One Generator, I talked about.
Hey, Brad. Thank you.
I'm coming back. Thanks, Brad.
Sorry.
Just just a couple of um small, although this one may not be so small. We met with the developer at a pre-application meeting for P and Z. We got another. Relatively, well, not relatively, large project being proposed on Nashville Road. Um. Eighty units. He hasn't submitted yet to P and Z, but they had their pre-application meeting.
These are the eighty units affordable. And it's so stackable.
It's an apartment building, basically.
Is it? But it's like stackable units or somewhere modular?
Some kind of, yeah, they pre-manufacture and they they build the same kind of thing in different spots, but it's like.
Yeah.
It's a big project for us. It's it's eighty units, seventy-five one-bedroom and ten, no, and five two-bedroom. So eighty-five bedrooms would be eighty-five hundred gallons. Sorry.
Uh, round?
Nashville.
Nashville.
Oh, Nashville.
Um, it's forty-eight fifty. It's kind of like, I think forty-eight's out at the front, fifty then opens up in the back.
Yeah.
And the back of that property butts up against the back of the condos that are on Chestnut Ridge.
Oh, okay.
This is all south of, north of the condo that has that pond.
Yeah.
So.
In the sewer district.
In the sewer.
In the water.
Yes.
Okay.
So anyway, they'll be looking for an allocation, which is pretty sizable.
Four blocks.
Um, related to just a couple of other products that are ongoing, haven't heard anything further. Regarding the pro or anticipated interlocal agreement for the project that's on the town line off Worcester Street. Haven't heard anything more. And uh, the proposed water and sewer mains on Taylor, I think, haven't heard back from anybody there either. I made my comments to P and Z that they still need to come here to make final applications to us. Reapprove their preliminary applications. So anyway, nothing more at this point. I assume they'll be in. Once they're done with P and Z, I guess.
Yeah, it's hard to believe, the vulnerability that we're doing. Which takes us about fifteen minutes to get to Stony Hill. Right now with the traffic. It's unbelievable. And that's status that I'm putting out there. You realize how close they are? And they get it from, oh, you know, oh, you bow, structure, fire, that wind is blowing. They're gonna lose quite a few of them in the house, they're gonna go, no question about it.
Yep.
And that's your bill to go, they're allowed to do it.
Yep.
Say it.
No.
That's all I had for directors.
Okay, I get it. Uh, okay, yeah, all business. I made your replacements. Where do we stand, Kelly?
Uh, right now, we are, uh, well, at the last month between ninety-one and eleven here and and out in Stony Hill, we had a hundred and two. We're down to ninety-nine because some of them are are, there's new ones that are starting to fail. But right now, we're same as last month. Month before, we dropped, I think we dropped one. So it's, it's an ongoing venture, but we we are under a hundred. And um, Paul did send out letters uh right after the uh the last agreed. So they're they're not coming in as heavy as they were last month, but they're they, you know, they're they're still orders.
Awesome.
But we're in a good place, I know.
Do you know how old, like the oldest ones there at this point?
They were done in two thousand three, two thousand two.
I meant like the ones that have been estimated. And I wonder if like, is she part that somebody that's been estimated more than eighteen months, we might only get to the point that we like knock on a door.
Yeah, yeah, well, we do knock on doors, but a lot of them work and that's the drawback for it. Well, yeah, this this whole system that's being changed out now, now was from here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I just did my big swings in it, and if somebody's been estimated for two years, you're gonna have bigger swings in it.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I don't know what we can do. There's nobody's home and don't want to give us access, but.
One of the things that you, it's like materials, you know, was talked about too, some of these people got hammered when they finally got the bill.
Yeah.
And they got crushed, and they haven't had any mechanism to help them.
The only thing we could do that's kind of nasty is shut their water off.
Yeah.
But that's uh, it's pretty bad PR.
Yeah.
Considering there's there's they're paying their bills.
Sure.
Hmm.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, not a lot of room to do anything. All right, uh, you see capital project status?
Uh, broom, our pay level is up to eighty-four percent. Uh, we recently just had a change order for uh seventy-seven hundred and ten dollars for rotometers. Which are the devices that are gonna measure, A, the chemicals that get injected into the water stream. At at each of the um feed pumps. And we also need them for the uh the analyzers, the pH, the chlorine, the tribitometers. They need a very low flow. The rotometers that were specked, I think, are no longer available, so they had to go to Plan B.
That was never included in the project?
Uh, it was, but I think the ones they specked out were not, are not available.
Okay.
Anymore, so. Yeah, well, we need them, so those are the one they spec.
Saying not to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
If they were the ones that were specked out, then it would have been in the price anyway, so.
How, what's been the policy? Again, new guy, really?
Hmm.
Yeah, new guy. What's been the policy about how to do change orders, like when these things come up?
I bring them up. Um, we have a contingency that kind of covers that.
Right, which I was gonna ask next. It's a contingency, I assume?
Yeah, our total, our total to date on this project is two hundred and. Two hundred and seven thousand in change orders, which is about two percent. So when you look at the percent of the project.
Yeah.
Two two is a decent number.
What's our contingency set?
Five percent. So you have a half a million in contingency.
Yeah.
Um, some of them were just stuff we wanted. Some of them, the bit like, I added up a few of the the main ones and we put in extra piping for PFOS.
Yeah.
In case we needed it.
Does the um, with respect to getting it done somewhat quickly. There's never been a process about bringing the change order for a board?
I I if I have time to, I do. This one, we gotta get them ordered, so it just kind of.
I mean, have we, have we ever talked about a policy on approving change orders, like, or did you ever?
No, we.
Yeah.
That's the problem we have, we we never discuss it for some reason. It's a sludge fund for the engineers and their. It is. I was a builder for over thirty years.
Sure.
And I dealt with a lot of projects. They dumped a lot of stuff that they screwed up on us to pay for, and we nailed them on it. Says, no, was not included. It's gotta be included. You paid for it. We're not paying for that. Just like when they shot that line and we had to put a bunker in the chamber, right? Down there, when they shot that, they're better for stuff. They don't pay for that stuff. It's responsibility is, he shot the line, he made the mistake. But they look at this money at Sturz, and it's.
Sure, I understand. Yeah.
It's wrong.
Hmm.
Well, it might be something we talk about down in the future, just like.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I think there needs to be a balance between between, you know, giving the director some leeway with certain things. Like this was a clear, like, yeah, we need to get done.
And it's it's a timing thing.
Timing, yeah, I know.
We only meet once.
But maybe we talk about other ones that we could do a special for. If it's, if it's important.
Yeah.
Right? You know, there's a million dollars out there that's still could be eaten up by whatever. Maybe we, maybe we talk in a future meeting about an amount or size or something. To balance that where, you know, if it's a big one, we we have a special if we need to. Or we give him the ability or, you know.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well, so you were dealing with it, that's I built. He designed and they built it.
Yeah.
Right? It's not a, a project where the architect can submit plans and we look at and review it.
Yeah.
This is a design-built project. You're leaving off the engineers to do that, all this stuff for you, and your hands are actually damaged.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay. All right, so uh PFAS.
PFAS, nothing new.
Nothing more, okay. Utility supervisor's report.
I actually have nothing other than just dealing with everything over on Midway. Um, we laid out what needs to be done now. Uh, Mark, I'll get all the services, Mark Bell, uh, dealing with the with the damage to the two homes. Uh, matter of fact, I'm going to be one of them right now to give the check for washer and dryer, and then I'm going to uh, I'll be in the contractor. Uh, at five o'clock with the woman, number six A and uh. Should we wear out with that?
With um, and and kind of with respect to those, you know, those couple of homes that were trashed, you know. It's one of these things where in the past, I mean, in some instances, as a commission, we could just say it's back of God. Because our insurance can, or insurance isn't necessarily covered. That's what happened with that sinkhole on Midway.
Oh, yeah.
The car fell in.
Yeah.
That we would do anything for. Even though, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I've talked about it, we knew that needed more repair. It had been repaired once. And all of a sudden, you know, car goes in, um, I would have liked to have given them at least money for the rental car. Maybe we'll talk about that on a future thing, but with this too, that we we've kind of stood behind what happened, because we know short drive is a mess. So in the future, might be something we talk about, like what we can and can't do for customers. Uh, what should come before the commission, but I would love to at some point talk about if we can make that one couple hole, at least for the rental car. We weren't, they didn't have collision on the car, that's gonna be a total loss, but they did put money out of pocket on their credit cards and. I don't know if that's something we bring up next time with business or.
I wonder if what um, what we should look at, Dan, in all of our free time, is talking to our insurance broker.
Yeah.
About, I wonder if we could look at things that otherwise wouldn't be covered and what our policy would cost.
Like self-insured.
Not even self-insured, like what if we, if we could buy an act of God policy that covers, you know, like.
Sure.
It obviously would be capped, and if we had to look at what it costs, but like.
Interesting. Yeah, yeah, let's do that. Okay.
So, I don't know if it exists, but we can have a conversation.
Yeah.
No, it's not that much. I mean, I mean, well, it's 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 you have a big issue, I mean. Probably cheaper by the insurance, though. It's probably a rider.
Yeah.
Like for a tough year. Yeah. Let's look at it, and we'll report back. Um, okay. Yeah, then we get wapped, but so it might not, yeah. And listen, the rental car might have been, I don't know, two thousand dollars probably, it might not have been very large. I don't know, like how many weeks they had it before they could get another car, but I know the car itself, they had collision, I told them. Your Kerma didn't do anything for them. Yeah, so I wasn't thrilled with that, because I thought, and the big, by the way, they went after Tinker, didn't they? Kerma went after Tinker trying to get money.
They were named.
For that.
I I I still think what, something got mixed up. In the police report, because the police report, I I had gotten everything. The priest, the police report said Tinker was on scene, and they were not seen.
Not what happened. Yeah.
They were called to come in and correct the scene. You you know what I mean? So I think that's, I think when they saw the report. Then Tinker was on scene, they automatically thought it was Tinker's fault, but they were just there to make the repair.
I mean, the the repair, it was a repair that was already there.
Yeah.
And the main broke again, I guess, underneath. That's, we know the.
That morning, I think they tried to get out of their house when they could. The asphalt was fine. It it looked fine, I'm sorry.